Hello, family. Let me put the ticker up. Wait on y'all to get in here. Just waiting on some of y'all to come on in, Shadow Work Sessions. Just shuffling up some of my cards and looking at some information I'm wanting to talk about tonight. I'm gonna give it about five minutes for people to get in. Hope all this will. Give it about five minutes for everybody to come trinkling in, Shadow Work Sessions. Shuffling up some decks. Okay, we got two more minutes. Two more minutes for people to come trinkling in and I'm gonna get started on what I'm talking about today for Shadow Work Sessions. Take a drink of water while I'm waiting on y'all to get in here. Okay, 6:35. Alright, so I'm gonna get started. Today's Shadow Work Session, family, is on repentance, okay? So we're gonna talk about repentance today because, um... I've been doing a lot of it, right? Confessing to my sins that I've done in the past. Um, those that are unknown as well, right? And, um, so we've been, you know, going through our lessons and everything in reference of, um... You know, my spiritual family and so forth. Um, if you're not in on that side, I'm trying to explain it to those who aren't in, you know, in my specific spiritual family that goes through the lessons and the teachings and so forth. And sometimes, we know of these things, you know, um, from my upbringing, right? Especially if you were like me and was brought up in the church, right? But, um, well, not really brought up in the church, but my granddaddy was a bishop, right? So I had to go to a lot of church with him. And then, but not on my mom's side. My mom's side, I mean, they were Baptist, but we didn't really go to church like that. But on my granddaddy's side, he would come pick me up and take me to church. So, um, you know, but he was Pentecostal as well. So that's where I pretty much learned a lot about church things, you know? And I learned there, you know, people always talked about repent of your sins and he did, you know, sermons about that and so forth, right? So I had heard it before, you know, um, people backsliding and all those, you know, terminologies that they give in the church life, you know? Um, but sometimes in church life, you know, um, they're not so forgiving, you know what I mean? So forgiveness was also something that had to be learned, right? I had to learn a lot of things in life, right? Um, not only from not having that as an example from some, from family members and so forth, but, um, just not having that in reference of spirituality as well, right? So, um, that, I was talking about forgiveness because we get forgiveness a lot in tarot and in oracle and the messages from our ancestors through the divination of the cards, we get forgiveness a lot. Well, forgiveness is a part of the repentance process as well, right? Forgiving yourself is what we always tell ourselves to do first, right? And foremost. Um, and I talk about that a lot in my Shadow Work videos, um, that I put up. And I think I have a video of forgiveness, right? On the Shadow Work Sessions that will be on All in the Cards, the main channel. So it starts there, right? Um, forgiving yourself and not feeling bad about the situation because it's already done, right? That's the first step. Some people don't talk about that. It's not the actual first step in repentance, but it's the first step in reference of getting to the repentance, right? Stages, right? And we're gonna talk, you know, I like to break things down into stages because that's how I kind of learn and how I teach myself some things once they're brought to my attention that this is something you need to work on. You know what I'm saying? So the first thing was the forgiveness, forgiving myself, right? And being going further and asking God for forgiveness for things from my past, starting with your past first. You know what I'm saying? Or even, excuse me, if you're in those type things now, right? Even if you're going through some type of situation now that you need to repent from or confess your sins, right? Really sit with your sins that you could be going through at this time or even before, right? So, you know, when I started looking at those things, I'm like, okay, you know, yeah... We, probably all of us have went through, you know, saying, "Oh my God, I gotta repent, I gotta repent." You know what I mean? For what I just did, you know, just jokingly, even in my twenties, I would say, you know, stuff like that, but really didn't mean it, right? Because I wasn't on no spiritual journey at that point in time. Of course, everyone, you know, I'm not gonna say everyone because some people in their twenties have been on spiritual journeys, right? But that wasn't my life, right? I was still lost, still trying to figure out, like, even in my thirties, some of my thirties, right? But I started changing and things started turning in my life, especially when my grandmother passed in 2015. That was a big, 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 um, traumatic situation for me, right? So that pushed me into my spiritual journey big time, right? And so, um, hits, I picked up tarot cards, I didn't have anyone to teach me tarot, right? I learned it on my own, um, and oracle cards and dealing with divination and all of those type things. I didn't have anyone to tell me, teach me or nothing, I just got me some cards and started, right? Um, because I've always wanted extended knowledge, truth, wisdom, right? Um, and I always was curious in reference of what's beyond me, right? Higher power, right? Um, but to myself, not letting others know, right? Until I actually started stepping into my real spiritual journey, which was more or less 2019, right? And so from there, um, pretty much from 2019 on, family, uh, it's pretty much where I was like, okay, something has to change, you know what I'm saying? Life has to change, that's when I kind of like stopped doing things with certain people. People started, you know, dropping by the wayside in reference of, you know, associates, I will call them, you know, not hanging out, not doing as much as I usually would do, right? So slowly but surely. And so looking back at, I'm telling you all this to say, looking back at some of those times, I can say, okay, I can kind of, you know, see myself changing, transitions, right? Transformations. And, um, can kind of see exactly where my life was in reference of what I needed to repent from and confess and what I was, what my mindset was, right? And the main things that was centered around my repentance so far that I've, you know, um, shadowed, did my shadow, because I do my own shadow work on my own, you guys know that this is Shadow Work Sessions. This is to give you the nudge and let you know from my standpoint and from my experience and what I go through, um, how to get to that point, right? How I've gotten to this point rather, so it can, you know, inspire you to do your own as well. But just looking back, knowing, okay, God, if I only knew, right? And, you know, just asking God to forgive me and I forgive myself because I didn't know, you know what I mean? What I was doing, what I was going through at that moment would be such a big price to have to pay in this day and time, right? Or in this part of my life. And so you have to ask for forgiveness from God, from the higher power, from the Most High, from your ancestors, right? And let them know your heart, also confess what it was that you did wrong or how did you feel about that situation? Me, I, you know, just one example, I'm not gonna go into all my stuff, right? But I mean, just one example, like, I was selfish, you know what I'm saying? That was one of the things that I could confess and ask the Most High to help me with, right? That I was selfish, I was only thinking of myself at that time. And, excuse me, and then going into more details, well, why was I selfish? Why was selfish, God? Because I felt this at that moment, this is what I felt not knowing and not understanding that you was my, my, my provider, you know? I was to still have faith, you know, um, and I didn't, I lacked that faith at that moment in time that made me selfish and make me do, you know, things that were out of my normal behavior and, you know, dah 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 dah. Or may have was the normal behavior for me back then. So these are some of the things that I wrote, you know? You can write this stuff down, if it's hard for you to speak it, you can speak it or you can think it, right? Sometimes I do, like I said, I do my shadow work laying down when I'm in bed with the lights out, where I'm just able to sit with my thoughts and speak to God and speak to my ancestors, right? Because it's all about the mental, remember? That's the first universal law in reference of divine lights, right? Is to be able to sit in the darkness to get there though, right? And so, you know, even if you gotta get up and meditate, you know, another, that's just another form of meditation. But, um, but to be able to sit with thyself and sit by yourself and go through those things and, um, really be able to look at your past and say, you know, "Well, I forgive myself and gotta ask that you give me mercy," right? And, um, that is a part of repentance. So I do wanna go through some of the things that I've researched about repentance, right? And the first thing is the definition, right? So I did give you guys on here on Patreon, I gave you three different, well, maybe two repentance prayers, okay? That you can do after this video when you do your shadow work on your own, right? And really going through those confessions of your sins and your repentance, right? Because it's a continuous thing. Repent, repenting is not just a one-time thing, okay? You can repent as many times as you need to as the word states it as well. Um, and in different forms, not just the Bible, but in multiple different forms of, um... The Most High literature, that's how I'm gonna put it, right? Because you got the Kabbalah, you got the Torah, you got the, um, Bible, you got multiple places, you got the Quran. You got multiple places to find the way that each one of them tell you how to repent or how to come in front of God and confess your sins, even if it's in the Catholic, right? They go to the priest or the, you know, priesthood and they, they confess their sins, right? So it's still in each religion, right? Or each, um, belief or faith, I'm gonna say faith, um, you have some form of repentance, right? And so that's the same thing, basically, we're discussing or talking about. So in this shadow work, I want you to understand that repentance, which is something that I'm telling you, you need to do, okay? Don't go further without doing it now, now is the time because there's gonna be some crazy times coming. And you need to go ahead and confess for the things that you've done and repent for the things that you've done in the past. Repentance is the action of repenting, the sincere regret or remorse from your heart, family, from your heart. Each person who turns to God in a genuine repentance and faith will be saved, okay? So repentance, it says typically requires an admission of guilt for committing a wrong or for omitting to do the right thing, which is the first thing I was telling you about. Being able to realize that, you know, point out what, you know, forgiving yourself and being able to point out what you've done wrong. That's, that also goes back to what we talked about last Shadow Work Session when we talked about the dark night of the soul. A part of repentance is a process, the process of the dark night of the soul, which is the first, goes into the first process or the phase of identifying the crisis. Which remember, I told you that the crisis is you, right? Hey sis, no problem! Um, and so that's the first part of our, um, repentance process, okay? Which goes back to what I said about, um, the dark night of the soul, which we talked about last week. And the first phase was identify the crisis. And then the first thing that it states in the literature for repentance is to be able to admit your guilt or admit the wrongdoing or admit to the things that you've done wrong, right? But, but it says, "A promise or resolve not to repeat the offense and attempt to make restitution for the wrong or in some way to reverse the harmful effects of the wrong or the omission where possible." Okay? So then you think, can you really sit with yourself and do that? You know what I mean? That it is a hard thing, you know? It's a hard thing to be able to admit what you've done wrong, right? It's very hard. It's hard to look back at the past and look at all the, the wrong mistakes and things that you've caused harm to others and your, even your own situation that has put you in a situation that may have caused some type of harm, you know, to yourself and others. Um, but it also states in reference of us, um... Being able to recognize that, you know, a lot of, you know, being able to repent is also understanding, right? That's the first thing, understanding that it is a problem, it is a crisis. And it starts with who? You. That's why repentance and confession of your sins is, has to be a part of shadow work, right? Because that's a part of you doing this for yourself. No one can make you repent, no one can make you confess. And some people don't even know that they need to do it, but don't do it. And say that they'll never do it because they can't, they can't, uh, sit with the reflection of themselves. Once again, the problem is that person or you, right? And so that's what I was trying to tell you earlier when I gave you guys the example of myself, right? And how I've been going through my process of repentance. Yes, you must have the desire, that's right, sis, must have the desire. And that desire has to be from the heart. It can, and, and I'm not saying, because the scripture does still say, you know, that even if you do it again, you still have, you still should go back and repent, yeah, your sins, regardless. Because it's all about your desire and that desire is another word for your intentions, you see? It's all about you setting the intent and the intent is something that is from the heart, you know? And so that's why I wanted to read to you guys the true meaning of repentance that they have. And then, you know, get into, you know, um, to give you, I'm gonna give you the two, the speci- two of the specific scriptures out of the Bible, since we are tapping on the different books of faith right now, even in our lessons with my spiritual family. Um, but some people have never read the Bible, some, some people have never even picked up a Bible. In some cases, like me, I, I have spirit, you know, it's, um, not, uh, I'm trying to say, what am I? It's certain scriptures and certain books that I've read, I haven't read the whole Bible though, you know what I mean? Um, being that my family was in the church, you know, my granddad's side, I mean, my dad's side, um, with my, my granddad being a bishop, we had no choice but, excuse me, but to know, I'm sorry, I ate before I came on y'all. But to know, um, you know, parts of scriptures and so forth, right? Like, of course, um, you know, my favorite one is, um, Philippians 4 and 11. "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." I will never forget that. That was also my grandma's favorite scripture and it's embedded in me. So, you know, I always try to stand on that, um... Even though I'm not religious, I'm spiritual, right? But I feel that that is true because I feel like that was in sense of you being, um, the person, a spiritual, I'm gonna say, a spiritual being, you can do all things yourself, right? That's how I feel about that scripture. Now, getting back to the repentance, um, the first one that I, um, that I, not that I found, but I seen, um, when I was researching it earlier, it says, "No, I tell you, but unless you repent, you will all likewise perish." That's like, if you don't, um, repent and confess your sins, then you're gonna have hell to, to, to withstand, you know, within life. You need to release yourself of the past. Sometimes burning bowls ceremonies might not work all the way through, but when you go to God, that's a different type of intention, that's a different type of stance, right? Like she said, that's in the desire, right? So, you know, do those things and it, you know, understand that when you do confess and you look at these scriptures and so forth, um, even if you have your own time to look at these scriptures, really, really sit with them and really, really take it in on what Spirit is in, in the Most High is trying to tell you, right? Like Miss, like Miss T said, decode the Bible, right? Because not all of it is true, but some of it is, right? But like, even on this part, it says, I mean, because you know, some people ask, "How many times can you repent?" Spirit said, "Repentance is always available, even if you've made the same mistake again." The Lord has said, "As often as my people repent, will I forgive them their trespasses against me." And that's Mosiah 26 and 30, okay? So be one of his people and return to the Lord whenever you stray. Talk to, you know, people and so forth. And then it says, "How do I repent and turn to God? Recognize your sins, feel remorse and godly sorrow and confess your sins to God," as I was stating to you guys earlier. It's about you going within. When you confess your, your sins, like I told you guys, I went into just straight darkness by myself, closed my eyes and meditated, spoke to the ancestors, spoke to the Most High and confessed the things that I know that I did wrong in my past and my current life and asked for mercy and forgiveness, even for the things that I know that I not do, right? The unknown, asked for grace and mercy and understanding from the Most High to forgive me, but not forgetting to confess specifics on what you know you have done and why you felt that you needed to do those things at that time. That's what I did, right? And so I also wrote them down. I didn't just say it out of my mouth or think it with thoughts because I did that too, but I also wrote it down and I burned the piece of paper. And after doing both of those things about the things from my past, family, and being able to relieve that, it was like a hundred bricks off my chest, off my back. You feel a sense of relief, okay? You feel a sense of relief. See, it's the easiest way for me to explain it after you do it, right? But we're gonna talk about some of the steps, right? Because y'all know I like to break things down into stages and phases, right? So repentance in four stages, okay? The first stage is you realize you've done something wrong, whether now or in the past, right? Or, um, you know, you could even repent and confess things based off of your lineage. Let's not forget about that, our lineage. Because we're learning about our nations and our lineage at this time. So I have added that, I went back and, and, uh, repent and confess to the Most Highs the things that I'm learning now. Because once you know about it, it's your responsibility then to confess and repent, even for those who can't do that or may be passed on, right? Because remember, that's still a part of you, right? So, you know, recognize and realize the things that are, that you've done wrong and, you know, write them down, if it's hard for you to think about it or talk about it or speak about it or whatever, but just get it out in some shape, form or fashion, okay? The second stage is there are feelings of remorse about your sin. So that's basically you sitting with yourself and thinking about that sin, right? And really realizing what, what made you get there, what made you have that experience, right? What was that mistake? What was that issue? You know, um, just really think about what brought you to the point of that sin, right? And why is it considered a sin, you know? Maybe in your eyes at that time, you may have felt like it wasn't, um, a sin, you know? Or maybe you wasn't even aware at the time in your past that it was a sin. And maybe you was aware, you know what I'm saying? But really sit and think about all those things, ask those questions to yourself. Those are some of the things I did, you know? Sit and thought about those things. And really tried to understand where I was at that moment in my mind. Um, and, and then even if you, you know, you have to take stages, that's another thing. With those two stages of repentance that we just talked about, sometimes you're gonna have to take parts of your life and, and say, "Okay, well, I'm gonna think about my childhood first and repent of some things that I did during our childhood." Then maybe next month, you know, take your time, be easy on yourself through it because this is not an easy process, it's a huge part of shadow work. But it's not an easy part of shadow work either, right? Because it's a big part of how we, we could be ashamed of ourselves. We can, you know, not like that part of ourselves at that moment or even now. We could not like the situation we was put in, you know? It could be something that, you know, made us not feel the best, um, made us angry, sad, depressed, you know what I'm saying? But that's a part of repenting and letting it go and confessing to God and asking for mercy, asking for favor, asking for understanding and grace, you know? And, um, that's a part of the repentance. I, I put, I posted the repentance prayer, some of you may wanna do that prayer, you know? After or before you state the things or go through some of these questions. Maybe you didn't have or know these questions, you can use this video and listen back to it and then write those questions down, right? That's what this Shadow Work Session is about. But the second stage is about you contemplating, you know? Maybe some of you feel like you don't know how to repent or you don't know what exactly to repent about. What Spirit said, there, there needs to be feelings of remorse. So you have to feel it from your heart that you're ultimately sorry. Sometimes that'll make you cry, you know? I bust a tear during that time because it was like, I didn't realize, you know, that I needed to do that. No problem, sis, that's what I'm here for, that's what I'm here for. But, um, you know, I cried during, during my repentance because I didn't realize how bad the sin was at that time because I was so young, you know? I'm gonna say, I was young-minded, right? That's the difference in a- That's the difference in age, family, right? Cause somebody could be very immature and still be in their thirties and still committing sin, see? Just as if there was a adolescent, right, a teenager. So, don't look at age, look at the times in your life and break it down in blocks. That's what I that's what I'm doing, right? So when I was younger, all the way up, okay, the next stage, maybe next month, you know, or maybe. Not even a month, but maybe next week, you know, you can look at when you were a teenager, then go to your twenties or go to your thirties. You know, how do you wanna do it if you made that many sins that you really feel like, okay, write it down, write it down, write it down. I always like writing things down, right? Because writing things down is a whole different way of releasing. People, we getting away from that because we got these, right? We got these phones, but these phones is really the downfall to. A lot of us have being able to release and be able to get out of the mindset of having something attached to us all the time with convenience. You know, and Sister Spirit guys really, really always, you know, would tell me to write it down. Put it on paper, okay? Cause you can actually see it, you know what I'm saying? And you you can see it, the most high can see it, but the most high can hear fear and uh hear your thoughts too, so. It it really don't matter, but it does matter, you know what I mean? And then the third stage is you renounce your sin or turn away from it, yes. So that's you stating, I ain't gonna do that no more, that's you renouncing it, that's you kinda like putting it out. And I'm not gonna do it no more, that's the end of that, I'm done with it, you know what I'm saying? Signed, sealed and delivered, right? And if you have to go back to doing that sin, Spirit says you're gonna have to repent and confess again, right? The but the most high sees your heart and knows your heart, sometimes this is in cases, not in reference of. Um well, it could be in multiple situations, you know, addictions, you know, people go to rehab, get out and do it again, right? Um a toxic relationship, trauma bonding, uh abusive relationship, you get out of it, you go back to that person, you know what I'm saying? But that's that's the repeat situation over and over and over and over again, right? And so God wants you to understand that. You gotta break that, for those who feel like you've done the same sin over and over, right? And there's no coming out of it, and so some people feel like that, you know? I know a few people who feel like that, why am I gonna repent when I know I'm gonna do it again? You can't think of things like that, because that means you're not even trying. So at least try, family, try, this is a part of you, this is a part of your shadow self. This is the part of you have to embrace the shadow self, right? What you are ashamed of. But the most high already know, but you gotta confess. And you you know, the most high is waiting on you to confess, waiting on you to repent. Waiting on you to change your life, so you can get your 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 wings, right? So you can prosper, you know? Like I told you guys, I felt a hundred percent better when I confessed a lot of the things, you know, that I've done in my past. That I wasn't, I wasn't um happy to, you know, really go back to or really even think about, right? But that's a part of me renouncing it and saying, I'm never gonna do that again anyway, God, I promise, you know what I'm saying? Give you a give you give your promise, you know, if that's gotta be a stamp for you to the most high, so when you know. You you know, you think about those things and you like, okay, I don't wanna do that, cause I had already promised God. You know what I'm saying? What's gonna be my punishment, pain and suffering, right? Those are those afflictions, cause sometimes it's embedded afflictions, right? But confessing your sins is to try to get those afflictions off of you, right? And try your positive attributes in life, because the positive is definitely gonna help outweigh those negatives, you know what I mean? Even if it's other signs and other things, cause it's not gonna happen overnight either, family, okay? You're not gonna change like that, that's not reality. Which is you gotta start, put one foot forward, right? One foot forward is all that is, all that's required of you, okay? And so the fourth step is, you know, once you you've renounced that sin, you've realized what it is. You you're remorseful, you know, of what you've done, then you're restored, you know? That's when you repent, that's when your repentance should take place, that's when you should. So some of you may need to go through those steps, you know what I'm saying? You get to that last step, that's when repentance should take place, that's when you should start confessing, go back to asking your questions, right? And some of the um messages that I had here, or some of the things that I looked up, right, was like. Um some people ask, why is it so hard to repent, you know, once you get to that repentant process because of fear? You know, fear can keep us from doing things that can change our life, okay? Um and remember, you know, you're supposed to have faith over fear anyway, okay? So, you know, just think about those things, okay? And you know, repentance is not just a one-time thing, Psalms fifty-one tells you that, okay? Um let's see, what else I wanna tell you guys? And and remember, God's mercy isn't in is uh indeed infinite, which is, you know, infinite. Another thing I wanted to talk about too about repentance is we going into this eight-year family. That is the in um infinity sign is then always look at that as the number eight, right? Which is the ending, I mean, the beginning and no ending, right? It's a it's a loop, right? And so you wanna be able to build yourself up when you're in that infinity loop of next year, right? You wanna be able to prosper, right? Because you build yourself up, that's how you get to the abundance, the abundance is not just gonna come, right? Everybody is not gonna just have a great abundant eight-year, it's based off of them building. Remember I told you Supreme Mathematics spelled that out for you guys? But if you decide to continue to sin and take on those afflictions that we're learning about, right? But not not only just those, but just sin within life, period. And that's a part of you destroying your your life and you won't be abundant, and then you'll still have to sit with those things. And the way that life is changing, family, and the way that this world is changing, um it's a lot of things that. You gotta mentally get your mind prepared for, and if you can't get your mind prepared for those things. And you still set on things from the past that's still occurring in your life, because you haven't even confessed the sins for those things. And you feel like in the future, things are gonna change for the better, you psyching yourself up, you psyching yourself up, okay? So you don't, you don't wanna do that to yourself, family, you wanna you wanna um, you know, you know. Some people say, well, how do you stop sinning? Well, you stop sinning by basically, you know, accepting and having accountability. On the on your actions, the things that you're doing in your life, okay? It goes back to accountability, the things that you know right from wrong, right? That's a part of you not, you know, stopping sinning or not sinning or whatever, right? Maybe even turn towards the most high and the ancestors, go go within, sit, meditate more, pray more. Ask the most high, what is it that I can do to stop the things that's allowing me to put myself in these positions? Or to continuous to sin, or you know, even to have these negative thoughts? Or to be still in a mindset of scarcity, you know, where you feel like you lack things. And then that causes you to do different things that aren't even of you, right? Um and that could be all the way down to theft and, you know, just different things, right? So, you wanna try to take accountability for yourself first, right? But remember, repentance and confessing your sins, they some some um literature, they they consider that what they call atonement. So that's like a stamp, you know what I'm saying? With the most high. So you wanna look at that as being something very serious within your shadow work family, confessing your sins and repentance, okay? So don't take this lightly, don't feel and don't feel like, don't get overwhelmed either, that's why I said, break it down, go slow. Forgive yourself first, cause see, if you don't forgive yourself first, then you gonna feel like this is a huge obligation. It's something that you you know, you gonna feel like it's something hard to do, when it's when it's when if you forgive yourself. And you go through those steps, what what I told you is realize that it's wrongdoing, you know, um really renounce it. That's you getting through that first, the first stages of repentance, right? Before you even get to the repenting, right? So I that's why I wanted to bring you guys some steps and to actually help you to get to the point. Cause some people feel like they don't know how to even do that, you know, like it's, you know, you gotta go and be, you know, I always tell you guys. Spiritual out, excuse me, spirituality is bendable, it's based off of you, it's your journey. Don't allow nobody to tell you how and what is right and wrong, because spirit is with you, your ancestors is with you. Allow them to help you to get through your process, right? But it's not for everybody, right? To be able to tell you how to go about something in your life, only thing people can do is give you the nudge, give you the information. Then you have to utilize that as wisdom of what you have to be able to discern and decode what the wisdom is for your understanding. The one, two and the three, okay? So you get a lot of knowledge out here, you get a lot of knowledge, but you gotta discern the knowledge, which is the information. From the information to the actual data, which is the facts, which is the wisdom. And then regain a understanding, if not understanding, overstanding. I love when Malachi York says that too, right? So it's certain pieces that I pull from different people in different places. I'm not gonna state that all of them are, you know, uh all the way accurate. But in some cases, you have to pull what you can and put together what works for you, what resonates with you, you see? That's how you should really look at your spiritual journey, you know? Don't try to be like no one else, don't try to um mimic others. In their journey, because their journey is not your journey, your journey is just for you, you know? And that's how I look at my journey, you know, I take pieces from everybody. I love Miss T, you know, she is the messenger, let me change that, right? She want us to not say she a master teacher, even though I told her she mass masters the knowledge of teaching. The information from the ancient ancestors, this is why we call her that. But as a messenger, I definitely love the information and the wisdom, she gives us wisdom. And it's about you understanding that wisdom, right? And also reading, listening to whatever you wanna listen to that you feel resonates with your higher self. Because remember, I always tell you, watch what you looking at with these eyes, look with this eye and watch what you putting in here too, right? And use discernment and your intuition to decode what is right and what's wrong. Based off of your gut, cause your gut ain't gonna never tell you wrong, okay? That's your inner voice, that spirit speaking to you, letting you know with discernment. And if you off with that, then you're out of balance, out of alignment, that's how you gonna know, right? If you still sinning and doing the things that you trying to come about of, that can also show you out of alignment, you out of balance, okay? And sometimes, family, it's not gonna be easy to come out of sin, okay? That's just, you in this human suit, okay? You in this human flesh, okay? I ain't saying it's gonna be easy, that's not reality. But for the things that you can and that you're knowledgeable about and that you want with your heart, that's what I'm telling you. And it said to be remorseful with your heart first, those are the things. That you're gonna repent for and confess, lot of things is things from the past with me. Because those things I'll never do again, I know better, right? A lot of what I started with was from before, like my my childhood things and when I was a teenager and those type of things, right? So, now that we know, we know, you know? And then you just have to carry on, family, it's about breaking the cycles, about breaking generational curses at this point, right? It's about those things that are the 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 strongest, right? That's what I mean, okay? So, to get on that cycle of things, family, it's all about the repentance, right? And so, um I just feel like we're doing that, like Spirit saying, you definitely gonna change your life. Definitely gonna change your life, you definitely gonna change your life, and I gave you the steps um of repentance. Like I said, repentance goes amongst all different faiths, they just have a different way of saying it, just like we always talk about. The Bible, the Quran, the Kabbalah, all of the Catholic, you know, whatever they use, the Torah, whatever, right? They all have a way of repentance, okay? Don't let nobody tell you they don't, they all do. This is really one doctrine, okay? We know that, you know? That was something I did know, you know, and I did know that that was the original has been stolen, right? Um so we do get a wash of it all, but that's the that's a part of you being able to decode, that's a part of your discernment. That discernment comes from the the heart chakra, family, okay? Um and from the from the crown chakra and from the third eye chakra as well, right, alignment. So I just wanted to bring you guys that, and I also, like I said, I posted repentance prayers out there. Um go slow, you know what I'm saying? Um for some people, it may be a slow process, and there's nothing wrong with that, okay? Cause shadow work is about you, alright? I'll keep telling you guys that over and over and over, because don't let nobody else tell you it's not, okay? And I will pull, because I felt like tonight, being that we had the repentance um message. That I, you know, basically wanted to talk about, I'm gonna pull some cards from the healing. Um oracle decks that I have, so this one was one that I hadn't used in a while, the healing mantra deck. And then I'm gonna pull us one from the healing oracle, okay? And so these two decks definitely give us um as a collective, you know, message on healing. Because the um repentance and the confession of your sins is a form of healing. It's a form of that process, it's a part of the process. And what is shadow work? Us being able to heal, us being able to sit with ourself that. You know, we've always had a problem with and we've hid, you know? Uh we've been ashamed of, you know, we 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 really have to, you know, heal, you know? So, that's why I wanted to pull a few of these based off of the people that are that are in my community that here. That are here on Patreon, that always come to Shadow Work Sessions, if you see this after, that's fine. This is your message, okay? So the collective message is based off of that tonight, and I'm gonna wrap it up. I just wanted to talk about repentance and confessing sins tonight with the collective based off of Shadow Work Sessions, okay? And you guys can do what you what you feel with this video, re-watch it, look over it. Um write down your questions, right, from what I spoke earlier, um. Think about what you need to confess and get started with that, family, don't put it off, okay? Um really realize that the most high and your ancestors and your lineage, right? Your ancestor lineage and the nations that you've come from and so forth, all deserve for you to confess. And even speak that, you know what I'm saying, out into the ethers to state, you know? The you know, the things that we now know were going on, right? Which was like mind blowing, but I know it was real, right? So, definitely sit with yourself, go over your past, but not only that, the world, right? Because if you were with me on the channel, I talked about um you guys going back and looking and reading Revelations in the Bible. If you do have it, that goes back to the lessons that we were learning in the spiritual family about the seven bowls, the seals and the trumpets. That is a really, really profound um book in the Bible that you wanna read. That's gonna give you a lot of explanations on the troubling times that we're going through, okay? So you want to definitely, want to definitely go back, family, okay? And if you can, get some other books about, you know, um for the from different faiths, like I got the Kabbalah. You know, I really like the Kabbalah, I've been really, really, you know, in the Kabbalah, so go back to that if you can. Um and I gotta get a Quran, right? So um I wanna do that too, um and the Torah, right? So just to look and see, you can get an English version, just to look and see, um. How you feel about it, right? What what do they say in their um in their scriptures and so forth, right? Cause every one of them have their own, right? We're just being conditioned to one, you know what I mean? So that's, that's the difference, family. So ancestors, give us, um, a few cards in reference of healing mantras that the collective can help, um, or they can, it can help them in reference of their process of repentance and confessing their sins. What is it that the collective hear, the people that see me and hear the sound of my voice in reference of their shadow work here, ancestors, in reference of healing? Thank you, ancestors, yes, okay? Discovering happiness. For some of you guys, it's about discovering happiness, okay? Spirit says discovering happiness is about you actually sitting with thyself and asking or saying the mantra and the affirmation that I allow myself to be content exactly as I am. I allow myself to be content exactly as I am. I allow myself to be content exactly as I am. And that's Spirit's affirmation for the collective in reference of you doing your shadow work. Because some of you need to be, um, get that reiteration, that inspiration and motivation to be yourself, to be authentic. I think we got that message over here before, to be just you, be you, be authentic, right? No matter what's happening, no matter what's going on with someone else, no matter who this other person wants you to be or this person right here is trying to make you out to be, be yourself, because that's a part of you discovering happiness. That's also a part of your shadow work, okay? And sitting with yourself, right? Being able to sit with yourself and reflect on what makes you happy and be content with it, right? Because you're one of one. I tell you guys this all the time, you want, you are one of one, okay? The Most High made you as you are supposed to be. So be authentically you, because that should be a part of you discovering your happiness, being you, okay? So, um, I'm gonna pull one more and then I'm gonna pull the healing mantra, I mean, a healing, um, oracle, okay? Thank you, ancestors. Expressing free will, yes, expressing free will. This card is an affirmation about my choices determine how brightly I shine. My choices determine how brightly I shine. My choices determine how brightly I shine. And I love this because this is like Spirit saying, you have the free will to do your repentance and your confession of your sins. And that's gonna be how brightly you shine, you see? Cause it's free will. You confessing your sins and being, and going through those stages of confessions, right? And repentance is based off of you expressing free will, that's a choice, okay? Only you can make that choice because it is free will. God gave us free will for those to be able to repent and those who don't want to. But see, it's free will because when it comes to the whole judgment day, Spirits are gonna say, ancestors, and the Most High gonna say, yeah, you have free will, right? But your free will shows me that you made the choice on how brightly you wanted to shine your light through the darkness, you see? And a part of that is you discovering your happiness here on earth, right? Yeah, I love that, yeah. Mm-hmm, I love that, expressing your free will because you definitely have the free will to repent and confess and that it should be a part of you discovering your happiness. I'm gonna pull the outcome message from the healing oracle deck and we will wrap it up, loves. I hope you guys were able to find in this message something that can help you get started in your repentance process, in confessing your sins, in really sitting with thyself in reflection and knowing that it is all about expressing your free will, right? And shining brightly, shine bright like a diamond, that's what Spirit just said to me. Shine bright like a diamond, yeah. Some of you guys are gonna shine bright like a diamond when you do start repenting your, um, sins and, you know, confessing your sins and repenting of the past. It's gonna be like I said, the weight off your shoulders, honey, you know? Yeah. All right, all right, ancestors, for the collective here, what is the outcome message in reference of their healing message? For the collective here, that hears my voice and sees this video? What is the healing message for them, please? Healing message for the collective here? And Spirit said, take it off the top. Your inner beauty, ooh, I love that. Your inner beauty. And this is blue, so it's, it's throat chakra, throat chakra. It's about your inner beauty. We have two cards in blue as well as balance on the bottom of the deck, ooh, crown chakra. Could even go for third eye because it's indigo, like a purple, balance on the bottom of the deck. And I'm gonna take both of those, okay? So the, the first one says, I open, I open the eyes of my heart and direct my, my gaze to the light within every being. Personality and physical appearances are in the image of man. Beauty and goodness are in the image of God. Ooh, I love that, I love that for us, inner beauty. See that? And the one that's on the bottom of the deck says, balance. I find a balance between each sphere of my life. I am the master of my daily life. I make time to nourish the spiritual and the physical, yes. I bring love to my world by fulfilling the needs of my body and soul. And that is definitely Spirit speaking to us about balancing mind, body, and soul, the true holy trinity, you see? And Spirit is saying, because a lot of you guys have that inner beauty, but also you need to reflect that inner beauty outside and be just you as well. You know, and Spirit knows your heart, Spirit's saying that, right? And knowing your personality and your, your physical appearances are just in reference of this soup, like I told you guys. But Spirit says, the beauty and the goodness are the image of God. That's what you wanna possess, that inner beauty. And it's blue energy here, throat chakra, but also sadder in energy. And that goes back to the free will, right? My choices determine how brightly I shine in discovering your happiness, right? Allowing yourself to be content as you are. Spirit gave us two about, um, discovering your beauty, me, your happiness and inner beauty, which are kinda similar about being who you are, because only God can judge you, all right? All right, family, that is it. We right at a hour, it's fifty-eight minutes on the clock. So I sat and talked to you guys for about forty-five minutes about repentance. Um, summarizing what I did here in this video, my intent was for you to go away from this video and be able to confess your sins and repent, okay? And also be able to do your shadow work on your own and incorporate repentance in that shadow work, family, okay? I love you guys through the darkness to the light. Make sure you go over there and check out, is it for you on the All in the Cards channel? Which I put up today was a really good message there, as well as, you welcome, love, you welcome, thank you for being here. As well as, um, I will start putting up the Rising Sign January readings. Those will go up starting probably tomorrow going into the new year, okay? Um, also, I'm putting up tonight, don't forget about our vision board party. If you see this, um, and after we've done the video, hit the like button as well. But also get your items together, you don't have to have, you know, don't, don't make this be something hard and crazy for you, okay? This is about our intent for the eight-year, okay? Because you know, we go by, we go by, uh, New Year's based off of not, not January first, okay? So we getting that together too, right? But I want you to take in consideration to come to the Zoom. I'll have the Zoom link up here tonight for Saturday at eight o'clock, okay? We're doing it on twelve-thirty at eight o'clock, okay? Um, a Zoom party, you can come, you know, just click on the Zoom and have your, uh, poster board or you can have a piece of paper. What we're doing is one side is for the year of gratitude for this seven year, okay? What we are grateful for, okay? Cause we wanna let the Most High and our ancestors know that we are of gratitude going into the eight-year. And then the other side of your poster board or paper or whatever is gonna be what you wanna envision for your eight-year. So you can get creative with that, get your stickers, papers, pens, crayons, I don't care. But that's the intent, okay, with the vision board. So I hope to see you all that's here on Patreon, because it's only for my Patreon family. And my crew will be here with me, we'll be downstairs and we'll be doing the same thing you guys be doing. And we're gonna record it, we're gonna have us a party, we're gonna all be together. We're gonna have our little, you know, um, appetizers and stuff. And I already got the little poster boards and things for my best friend and, um, my son's girlfriend is gonna come. So we're gonna have a good old party, vision board party where we're gonna set out a tip for our year eight. And I'm excited, okay? So I hope to see all of my Patreon family on that Zoom. And I love you guys through the darkness to the light, see you later, bye.